Hello.
John. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Bob, is there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
No move.
Motion second to adopt the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Need approval of the minutes from May 9, 2013, or any changes or additions need to know at this time?
No approval as reported.
Motion second to approve the minutes as reported, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Council members wish to speak?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman.
Hit your mic button, the black one.
The black one. I don't see the button. Does the mic help me?
It's on.
Is it on? Okay. Thank you, Chairman and fellow commissioners. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of the residents of District 30, could be here this evening. I received notice about the agenda about three to four weeks ago, which is a great thing. I love the system y'all have notifying the council members. I'm here regards of the item number five on your consent agenda revision to Lot 134, Lot 2 amendment. About three to four weeks ago, when I received the mailer, and so does my residents around the area, I've received several numerous emails and phone calls regarding this amendment and this zoning change. As you may or may not know, most of the homes in this area are single-family homes. And the property owner for this address is looking to remove the amendment, I mean, remove the note to restrict, restrict, to allow duplex. And the issues that most of the residents of District 30 had about this legislation was that it just wasn't, won't fit well in the neighborhood. Most of the homes are single-family on East Ridge and Haywood. And they asked me to come up there and just express that to you about this situation. And also, as a council member, I was, the only issue I had with this change is that I wish the property owner would have reached out to me, and the neighbors as well, to speak and just get their concerns with the neighborhood and be a better neighbor. So with all that said, I kindly ask that you vote against this legislation. I was on the consent agenda, but I wish you would urgently consider voting against this, please.
We're gonna have a public hearing on it today, so...
Yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Any other councilmen in the audience? Five items to be deferred.
There is one item to be deferred. It's item number seven, under Other Business. It's a contract amendment number two between the Nashville-Davidson County Metropolitan Planning Commission on behalf of the Nashville-area MPO and NCDC authorizing additional work on the development of booklets stemming from NCDC and UTK studio work. And that is being requested to be deferred to the June 13, 2013 commission meeting.
There's a motion to defer item seven.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second to defer item seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items on consent.
Before I get to the consent agenda, as information for our audience, if you're not satisfied with the decision made by the planning commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the planning commission decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the items be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read these items into the consent agenda, please raise your hand if you'd like these to be removed. The first item is item number two, 2009 SP dash 021 dash 003, on page four of your agenda, the Blakemore Primitive Baptist SP amendment. This is a request to amend the Blakemore Primitive Baptist SP district for property located at 2411B Blakemore Avenue, to construct a roof over the outdoor terrace along Blakemore Avenue and to modify conditions in the original SP approval pertaining to outdoor music, hours of operation, the allowance of outdoor events, and notice to Metro Nashville Public Schools and Metro Parks and Recreation regarding event dates. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without conditions. Item number three, 2013Z dash 016 PR dash 001, on page five of the agenda. This is 3533 Brick Church Pike. This is a request to rezone from RS 7.5 to R6 zoning for property located at 3533 Brick Church Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. The next item is item number four, 2013S dash 072 dash 001, on page five of the agenda. Linden Place, resubdivision of lots eight and nine. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on properties located at 2112, 2114 Sunset Place, zoned RS 7.5. Staff recommends approval. And the last item on the consent agenda is item number six, under Other Business. This is a contract between Nashville-Davidson County Metropolitan Planning Commission on behalf of the Nashville-area MPO and the Nashville MTA to pass through MPO federal planning grant funds to the Nashville MTA for their participation in the regional transit planning activities. And staff recommendation is to approve.
Thank you. Staff has recommended items two, three, four, and six to be voted on by consent without public hearing. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those have now been voted on and approved. For the audience, items 1A and 1B are on the agenda, but the public hearing is closed. Item five will be discussed after disposition of item 1A and 1B, and there is a public hearing open on that. The commissioners that weren't here last week, could we see a show of hands?
We just need to confirm that you've had the opportunity to review the video. And Andre?
Yes. I reviewed the video.
Yes, all 52 minutes of it.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
And item 1A does require six affirmative votes and 1B majority if you approve those.
We have received information that's been provided as part of your packet. We've got information provided from the Silver Park Neighborhood Association as well as other individuals. In addition, there's been some information that we got late that is at your desk here. We didn't copy the part that was earlier sent to you in my email. And do you require, would you like to have another presentation on this?
I think if we could get what information is new, we should have a presentation of, if we could. Please.
I'll just show you all the revised site plan. This is the site plan. It's only minimally changed from the last meeting from May 9. If you take a look at the southern half of the site, the commercial building, the applicant has changed the size of the two interior spaces. With the, with the commercial space, tenant space A was formerly 1,700 square feet and has been increased to 1,900 square feet. And tenant space B has, was previously 3,200 square feet and is now, with this new plan, 3,000 square feet. And tenant space B was the space that included the full-service restaurant use that, that required essentially all of the parking shown behind the building, or all the required parking within the site. Tenant space A, with its proposed uses, was not required any parking. But tenant space B has been reduced by 200 square feet. Additionally, the applicant has changed the hours of operation proposal. For, for tenant space A, for retail use, the tenant, the hours of operation will be limited to 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And with the restaurant use in tenant space B, the hours of operation are limited to 6:00 PM, I'm sorry, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And those are the changes from, from the presentation, from the plan from the last planning commission meeting.
Could I ask you a question? What about the capacity of the restaurant? Has that changed also?
The SP doesn't include any specific standards for the number of seats. So, and that's something that would be difficult for Metro to review, to require, because no permit is required for changing out seats or changing out tables. So it's, it's, it's all based on square footage. So I guess there's been probably some capacity reduced by reducing the overall square footage of that space, but not, not specifically in the number of seats.
Okay. Thank you.
The district councilman's come in since recognized councilman. Would you like to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just briefly. I do want the commission to know that I've had several conversations with both the developers and the immediately adjacent neighbors since we were last here. We had a meeting on Monday night. At that meeting, the neighbors reviewed this latest plan. Their compromise request back to the developer was that the second commercial space, the proposed restaurant space be reduced from, or be reduced down to 2,300 square feet, which would permit, I believe I'm right, an 87, an 87-seat restaurant based on the square footage requirement. So, and that was part of their request, was, they were concerned about the enforceability of a condition, if it was just placed on a condition that actually wasn't comparable to what Metro's requirements are with regard to square footage. And so they asked that the square footage of that second unit be reduced to 2,300 square feet. I have met with the developer, Andy Stone, this afternoon, shared that with him, and, and he asked that we go forward today, because obviously that impacts their business model somewhat, and they are examining it to determine whether they can commit. But that is where we are today. It's been a good dialogue. And, and if they're not able to resolve that today, that's what I've told them that I would do at the council level, is support a 2,300-square-foot restaurant as the second space.
Just for clarification, he has agreed to the 2,300?
No, he has not agreed at this time. But, but, but I want to be clear, we just talked about that. It's been a dialogue back and forth, and we just had that conversation this afternoon. So that's, that's where we are at this point.
Thank you. Rick, what, what is the square footage that the staff has agreed to?
I think the current plan on that, the rest, the spot, the question you said was 3,000?
Right. It's 3,000 gross square feet.
Okay. And the request, as we understand from the councilman, is to remove that portion from 3,000 to 2,300.
Are we...
That was a discussion anyway.
Is there, can I?
Go ahead.
Is there, I was, this is something I was gonna ask anyway. Are we limiting them, or would we be limiting them in the way it's presented tonight, to just two spaces? If at some point they wanted to make three spaces, does the SP allow that? Or could we suggest that it could?
Well, I just want to say that the request from the neighbors, and I think we're resolved on this, is that they could not blow through that wall and make one space. We haven't really talked so much about, could you divide one of those and make it a third space? I think that would frankly probably be less problematic, but, but one of the conditions would be that you could not blow through that wall and later create a 4,000-square-foot space, or 4,200-square-foot space.
I think if the applicant came back and wanted to change the number of, I think we'd have to review a different plan if it came in to see how it would apply to this SP. But they've been pretty specific about two spaces and labeling the specific uses in those spaces and the specific square footage of those spaces. So I, I don't see how that could change.
Greg, for clarification, the SP is written such that it would prohibit a full-service restaurant in tenant space A?
That's right. It would allow for a takeout restaurant, but not a full-service restaurant.
So if I'm counting right, there are 14 parking spaces here?
14 behind the commercial building and another five on the street along 46th Avenue.
In front of this property?
That's right.
So 14 and five, so there's 19 parking spaces to serve a potentially 20, 70-plus-seat restaurant.
That's right. And that's, and that meets the requirement of the urban zoning overlay. And the urban zoning overlay assumes that it's in an area where there is on-street parking present and where the site is within proximity to, you know, to residents or to people living in it.
Same urban zoning, urban overlay that's in effect in 12 South where all the parking problems exist now?
It's the same overlay that's present on 12 South.
So a lot of these houses along 46th Avenue don't have driveways?
There, a lot of, there are alleys serving many of the, many of the properties surrounding this site. Some properties take access from the alley, some properties take access from a driveway connected to a public street, and there are some that don't, that don't have, that appear to not have either. But it seems, it seems that most properties have access of some kind, either from the alley or from the street frontage.
But we don't, then we don't know exactly how many, how many houses there that might not have any parking if their parking was taken by a restaurant patron?
I think, I think the opportunity exists for every residential property to have, to have parking either in front of the house or off-street.
Right. But I, okay.
Served by, served by an alley or served by a driveway from the street.
Okay. So I thought you just said also that there were some that appeared not to have either.
I think, yeah, there, you know, these houses, many of these houses were built before the current zoning requirements to provide two spaces, two parking spaces per dwelling. So it's, it's possible, some of them that don't have parking were probably built before that regulation was put in place.
Councilman, can you help us with that?
You're asking who does not have? I know of at least one person that's raised it to me that does not either have, does not have off-street parking. And there may be others, but I know of one for sure, she's actually here, and that's her primary concern, is that if parking spills over into the street, that she does not have off-street parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I clarify that, though? Every parcel within the immediate vicinity has a public street in front of it.
That's right.
And virtually every property nearby has a public alley behind it.
Most of them do.
And they all have rights to access those public rights.
That's right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other discretion for commissioners? You read the vote on 1A?
Actually, I have reviewed the video, and it was a remarkable hearing with very prepared folks on both sides with a lot of good, good questions and good statements. It's, it's, I guess I'm just interested in what our limits can be. I think it's a little bit of a different situation now, that we find the city's authority to, to provide residential parking under attack in courts, which traditionally would be how we could say to residents, yes, this will be different because it's a commercial use that you have not anticipated, even though this was a, not a residential lot completely. But if it gets really bad, we can always regulate through residential permit. Now, that hasn't been decided as to whether Metro has the authority to do that, but it at least is in question at the moment. I don't know if that, that would certainly matter to me if I lived there, obviously. At the same time, we see that one of the reasons Silver Park has become so attractive, other than excellent representation by council members, is, is the proximity of restaurants and other, other commercial areas. It's not a wasteland that's either all commercial or all residential. It's what we want for urban neighborhoods, and this is an extension of that. So for us, I guess on the commission, the question is, how comfortable can we be with what's in this particular proposal, that it will not be an overwhelming harm or overwhelming inconvenience slash harm to the, to the closest residents? I mean, I don't know if we really have discussed that a lot. I appreciate, it does sound like the proponents of this, the, have gone to great lengths to, to work with the neighborhood association, with, with the council member, and it's different than it was. Could someone, could the staff remind us of kinda what, has this changed since this was originally brought into the commission? In terms of, other than today's small, small reduction in, in the restaurant, full-service restaurant area?
The commercial building has remained the same size in terms of square footage since the original submittal, and I believe the residential dwellings, the three along Utah Avenue, have also remained basically within the same footprint, to my knowledge, and same, same bulk standards proposed within the SP since the original submittal.
I remember there was a lot of debate at the last meeting that indicated that there had been changes worked with, with members of the neighborhood before it came to the commission. So this isn't necessarily what they were looking at originally. So I think that they deserve some credit for that. I'm just a little worried about the, the enforceability of some of our, our traditional tools, the availability of some of our additional tools to protect neighborhoods if a specific situation gets to be bad. I don't know. I'd like to hear some more discussion before we actually vote on it, from people who've thought about it on the commission.
Hunter?
I have a question related to on-street parking nearby and off-site improvements. And I don't know if it ever came up with staff, but I drove by there the other day, and of course, the developer's gonna have to construct a new curb, sidewalk, and provide for those spaces that are, that they're showing on the plan there. They're not really defined or striped currently. Is that correct?
No, that's correct. There's currently kind of parallel parking, or not parallel parking, perpendicular parking off of, directly off of 46th, and that's gonna be removed.
Do you all know if there's room within the right-of-way on other blocks for additional parallel parking, and is parallel parking allowed along 46th?
Parallel parking is permitted along, on, on surrounding side streets. There, there is a bike lane on a portion of 46th where on-street parking wouldn't, wouldn't be, wouldn't, couldn't be placed. But, you know, with this, you're right, they're adding the curb, they've showed up, they've widened the sidewalk on this site since the original submittal. And, you know, there's, there is the opportunity on surrounding streets, along with the construction of this on-street parking for, for other on-street parking.
Sometime, I just was gonna add to that, that sometime ago, the Murphy Road bike lane allows nighttime on-street parking, primarily so that residents could utilize it. This is also a bike lane, and we have talked about the idea of that. I'm not sure that that would be supported. I mean, it would obviously be a trade-off for residents, and I think it's something that we, we could consider, but at this point, there's no parking because it's a bike lane.
Councilman, real quickly while you're up there, for the residents who don't have parking, how close do they live in proximity to the proposed?
The one that I mentioned earlier lives within a block. So it is an immediate issue for her. What's your address? Andy, what's your address? Andy, what's your address?
4504.
So 4504, which is the 4,500 block, and this is between 45th and 46th.
And then, secondly, have there been discussions regarding valet parking and using other institutional uses or park?
Yes.
Parking spaces in the neighborhood? And what's the status of that?
Yes, there have, and I, the condition that we have talked about is a requirement that they provide, not necessarily valet parking, but a certain amount of off-site parking. Staff felt like that was appropriate and enforceable. The issue that we have is whether or not, and you can actually see at 47th and Wyoming, just a little bit up in the corner there, yeah, that's, that's church parking lot that is not utilized during peak hours for this restaurant, but it's zoned residential. So I'm not sure that we would be able to utilize that, but that's actually part of the discussion that we had today, is, is there a way to incorporate that? And that is clearly the nearest off-site parking that would make sense, and the issue is whether or not, under zoning code, since it's residentially zoned, could they enter into a shared parking agreement with this restaurant to provide that parking?
How close is the community center?
Well, so below that is Nebraska, and, and the community center is one more block down at Murphy Road. It's between Murphy and Nebraska, or I'm sorry, between Murphy and Colorado. So you have Nebraska, and then what you don't see on the map is Colorado, and between Colorado and Murphy, that's where the community center is. So it would be about two blocks. It would be about the same distance as Wyoming, although we've, we've talked with parks in the past about utilizing some of the golf course parking for some of the other commercial down there. I think that when the roundabout goes in, we will actually get a new trailhead down there that will be able to be utilized for that parking, but there's been some reluctance from parks to full-time allow that to be used for commercial parking for obvious reasons. I want to be sure it's available to their...
And to continue this discussion of shared parking with the church, from the staff's perspective, could restaurant and/or other tenant employees be designated in the lease agreements to park in the church, since they're gonna be there on a more continual basis than the restaurant patrons or other tenant patrons?
There are off-site parking requirements in the zoning code, and I, you know, I think it would be pretty easy in the SP to just put in requirements for off-street parking. I'm not sure how easy it would be to review standards for who parks in that off-site parking location. But I think that, that could be, that off-site parking allowance could be written into the SP, and if the applicant wanted to put into the lease agreements something about who parks there, that might be a roundabout way to do it, or a way to, a way to accomplish that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question while you're still on the roads, Hunter. Is, in our major streets plan, 46th is pretty wide there. What's our, what's our designated plan for that section of 46th out to Charlotte as far as?
It's an arterial boulevard, and the, if you look at the site plan, the applicant has shown, has shown a right-of-way dedication along 46th and is meeting the recommendation for both the planter areas and for the, for the sidewalk widths along 46th Avenue.
Well, my question was then, if we have a bike lane on one side, with the width that it is, an arterial boulevard, could we have on-street parking designated on the other side of the street? Is there room for that? And would that, is that, does that fit in with that kind of designation?
To my knowledge, the street, the right-of, the right-of-way width on 46th Avenue is, is pretty wide.
Right.
And to my knowledge, it's wide enough at this point for, to allow for all of those aspects within the, within this right-of-way.
So it seems like there's plenty of street parking all along 46th, just on the outside of the bike lane on the other side of the road. But it's not being, I don't think people are parking there right now.
Yeah, I mean, that was what I was getting at, to verify whether people were allowed to park on 46th, but also, you know, whether, one thing that we or the councilman might consider is, and the developers might consider, is making improvements for those, for the designated parallel parking on an additional block or two along the way. And there's a cost associated with that, but it would, it would provide additional on-street, well-defined on-street parking. I'm in favor of the nighttime parking in the bike lane concept. Would like to see that in other places around town as well. So, you know, I think there could be some additional, more useful parking created as part of this project, but even now, so, so with the bike lane, there's no additional pavement outside of the bike lane, so really, there's not parallel parking allowed on 46th currently. Is that correct?
Right. That's, where there is a bike lane.
Yeah, it would, it would need to be restriped. It's a wide lane of travel. I mean, I think there could definitely be a road diet there. There would, there would permit a bike lane and on-street parallel parking, but it doesn't exist. That would have to be something that public works.
And that may, without necessarily building new curb and gutter and all that, that may be something certainly to look at, is how much pavement width is there? Can we accommodate? Can we accommodate the bike lane and parallel parking through there?
If the neighborhood were to support that, I do think that the width of travel lane is available, and there's, there's actually the green strip in the sidewalk that already exists in this area.
That would be, that would be great.
Stuart. I think we've generated some interesting ideas today that haven't been fully explored. I like the idea of appropriate and gradual expansion of non-residential and urban neighborhoods. I, I would be prepared to support a motion to defer this again, depending on where it stands in the council and whether that would be a problem. Because I don't think we fully have protected the area as much as we might if we explored some of these other options. I think it may be a tad bigger than this area needs, even with a tendency to like mixed use in, in urban neighborhoods. So depending on the motion that's made, I might be able to support further efforts to make this slightly more balanced and slightly more supportable from a planning standpoint.
I have a question on that, because I reread the policy, and it, it says that the bigger space is, allows retail or restaurant. And I'd like to think about things in the long term. Things evolve and change, and sometimes a restaurant lasts forever, and sometimes it becomes another restaurant, sometimes it changes entirely. And I heard people say they'd love the idea of a market if they were people who didn't want a restaurant. And I want to think about what size something else that might go there could be to be successful. You know, if we restrict it now, is it, and then a market comes in the future, would it, would we be restricting something that would then be able to go there, for example? I'm just sort of throwing that out to be sure. I'm with you, Stuart, to consider both sides, but I want to kind of consider all sides.
Yeah, and Stuart, before we talk about a deferral, I'd love to hear from the councilman again. It seems to me, based on the prior meeting and what we've heard from the neighbors, that this has been going on for eight months, nine months, constant meetings, so I'm not quite sure what another deferral will accomplish.
Well, and I, I think I've, I've told you what the amendment would be that I would bring to the council, and there's a resolution among the neighbors with that condition. As to the, the parking conditions, I'll say, I think some of that would be outside the scope of this project, definitely a discussion that we need to have, but also, I think some of it may be reactive to what the, what the build-out looks like, what the, what the functionality of the restaurant is once it's constructed. So we're in a little bit of an uncomfortable position, because I, I don't want to ask you for deferral, because that's two more weeks and pushes them to another month's public hearing. At the same time, it's obviously for you to decide whether you want to add a condition that's consistent with what I've proposed, is what I'll support at the council, which is the twenty-three-hundred square foot commercial space B. That may be one way to deal with it, is that if you add that condition here, that's consistent with what I've told them I would support at the council, and I think that would address some of the concerns that Commissioner Clifton has, and might allow it to also stay on the timeframe that it's on now. They, I will say, they have, they have bumped off of one public hearing at the council already.
Let me ask a supplemental question to that. If you were to reduce the size of the restaurant, would you add that footage back to the bakery or whatever that other use is?
No, this revised plan that you see before you has already taken the commercial space A and moved it from seventeen to nineteen hundred.
And you leave that alone?
And we'll leave that. That was part of the discussion. That was actually part of the discussion as to why we'd reduce the other.
But where would the other seven hundred feet go?
Away.
Or just off of the building entirely?
Yeah, just a smaller, smaller building footprint. And I'll, and I'll say, part of my thinking and where I arrived at what I thought would address as much of everyone's concern as possible, is that the currently constructed building is three thousand square feet. This would still be four thousand square, or forty-two hundred square feet. It would still be, you know, about a third bigger than what's, what's on the site now.
The concern for the bigger space is that it's, that it'd be too big, when in fact it's the same size as what's there now, as far as the restaurant use, right? In the existing restaurant, three thousand?
The existing, well, the existing restaurant, it's not a restaurant now, but the existing space is three thousand square feet. And, and the concern was that that plus the other commercial use would be too much. Yeah. And, and this way, there will be a smaller restaurant space, I think arguably a more functional restaurant space. I mean, this is a nineteen fifty's cinder block building that they're now, of twenty-three-hundred square foot instead of three thousand square foot, but also a second commercial space of nineteen hundred square feet.
But to clarify real quickly, Greg, if they wanted to adaptively reuse the three-thousand square foot building, could it be a three-thousand square foot restaurant?
We've been looking at different layouts of, of parking and of the site based on the current CN, the current CN property, or the current, the one property's own CN, and it looks preliminarily like they could provide enough parking and meet the zoning requirements to use that building as a restaurant.
We'll go down to line Stuart, and then we'll go down to comments.
You don't have to.
I don't. He wants to. I feel like Hunter will resolve any questions I have. I defer to him in the.
It didn't look like you were prepared to comment. That was my question first, was whether by right they could do a three thousand. So, you know, if that's the case, or even close, you know, twenty-nine hundred, you know, I have a hard time not supporting this. And I'm going to back up a little bit. The, there's a, well, for the last fifteen years or so, maybe longer, we have been, we being the commission, the public, the urban neighborhoods, have been clamoring for these old, you know, rundown corner commercial properties to be revitalized. And, you know, certainly, I do think ultimately we need to look at the zoning ordinance, the UDO, some of the parking requirements. I think there's some other types of solutions that could help solve these issues. I mean, Twelve South's a victim of its own success. Probably the same people that were trying to revitalize it twenty years ago are now complaining because they can't park in front of their house. Though interestingly, after, after the residential parking, and I'm sorry to get off subject slightly here, but after the residential parking permits were approved on the four streets over there, I drove over there and was shocked, and the reason I did it is because I always park on the street in the neighborhood when I go over there. And I was shocked to find that probably eighty percent of the homes were served by an alley over there. And even on top of that, surprisingly, even with alleys, about sixty percent of the homes on all four of these streets had driveways. And so, you know, people have the right to park on their own property. They have the right to create a new driveway cut if they don't have one. They have the right to access the alley. So they do have their own parking. The public right-of-way should be dedicated to the public. And so I'm going to support the project as is. I certainly understand the concerns. I mean, I live in an urban neighborhood, and there are compromises that we all deal with in whatever neighborhood we live in. And I think the benefits and of these types of, and this is really small scale compared to most of these, Five Points, you know, Riverside Village, which has boomed, Twelve South, you name it, we keep going, and this is really, really small in scale. And so, you know, I think we should, we should support, especially at this scale, especially when they're allowed by right to do a three thousand square foot full-service restaurant, I think we should support the project.
Really? A thought, and this is putting you on the spot. If you were to take the seven hundred feet off of the southern boundary of space B, would that allow enough room for two parking spaces?
You mean, by making the building smaller, would you be able to fit two additional ones?
Just trying to skin a cat another way.
I understand. I mean, the only thing I can think of is if they reduce it by taking a chunk out of, you know, a corner of the building and trying to take a, put a parking space directly off of the alley. It would cut through their walking, it would cut through their walkway. That'd be one thing they could think of.
You know, I'm not that familiar with how many exact square footages you would take for a car, but I.
Parking spaces, I think, three hundred and fifty square feet, so yeah, losing some.
Just by coincidence, two times three fifty is seven hundred.
I think, Phil, getting the access, if you eliminated that, you create an area for those, for the cars to park, but the way this is laid out, them gaining access to get in there to it without losing probably two spaces that's already there now.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I was just thinking about taking it off of this area right there.
I don't, I think it's difficult to say whether that would work or not. You need to have the sidewalk. You need to be able to connect the parking to the front of the building. So that, I mean, whether you could get parking spaces that run roughly nine, nine feet wide, I guess, nine by twenty or so, probably. Whether, whether you've got enough distance, I just don't know.
Okay. I like the reduction in size. I would really be in favor of supporting that.
I had a question about the, you mentioned earlier about the possibility of parking on the neighboring streets, the cross streets to, to Forty-sixth. Do most of those houses have the same challenge as far as either parking on the street or parking on their own lot off of an alley? Or do they have driveways?
I don't have a good estimate for you of the percentage of lots that have driveway access versus alley access. It looks like, just from my, my last site visit, it seemed like most had driveway access to the fronting street, but it did seem like there was, there were some that didn't, that presumably took access from a rear alley.
All right. I'm, you know, we've gone through in the past year or so significant challenges and still have challenges as far as parking. Over in the Hillsborough Village area where there's, the new school was built, folks over there almost had an uprising because they weren't able to get down their street, they weren't able to park on the street. Twelve South right now is, I mean, just what, this past week, there was a newspaper article about all that's, the problems that are being created because of commercial space intruding into residential space. And when I look at the sheet that we have here, what the neighborhood association said that they would consider as far as conditions, but we have no, we have no guarantee that those conditions are going to be met. And if we move forward and approve this, just so we can make the next public hearing, then we're putting a lot of pressure on the council member to, to be a referee here between his, his community and, and this developer, that he really doesn't need to inherit. And I'm just really uncomfortable with the parking and the, as Commissioner Clifton said, the like of protection to this neighborhood at this point in time. I just think there are too many, there are too many unknowns as to how this is eventually going to fall out.
Councilman, I have a question related to one of your comments. I may have misunderstood either you or the district councilman. You're saying by approving it as proposed tonight will put additional pressure on the councilman, but wasn't the councilman in favor of going ahead and approving tonight and that he would deal with as many of the conditions as he could between now and public hearing?
The way I understood his comment was that a delight, a, another deferral here would push the developer to the next public hearing. I didn't, I didn't hear him say that he would prefer to handle the issue so that it could get to the, the scheduled public hearing.
I'll just say, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, with the, with the reduction to twenty-three-hundred square feet. That's what I intend to support at the council, and I have agreement from the neighborhood for that. The developer understandably needs to crunch those numbers and, and make a decision about whether they want to go forward, if that's the condition. And I told them I would defer to what you want to do here tonight, but that's what I'll do at the council, so if you want to do something consistent with that, I certainly don't oppose that. Guess that's the way for me to say it.
So if we put the, if we added that as a condition ourselves, and then he goes and he looks at the numbers and says, "This is not going to work. I can't be, I can't, I can't come out on top by reducing it that much," then we've put him in a position that's a no-win. So I, you know, there's just, I think there are questions that still have to be answered that we don't need to force at this point in time.
Stuart, going back to a basic question, the current legal use of the property allows for how much commercial use?
I guess that's a two-part answer. There's, the existing non-conforming building is about twenty-nine, it's, it's close to three thousand square feet, and that allows for uses that are permitted within the CN zoning district. If a new building were constructed on that site today, if that building weren't there and this were a vacant CN zone property, it would allow about twenty-three-hundred square feet of, of square footage.
So, so this, the proposed SP mixed use allows forty-nine hundred, which is significantly more than either of those other two current legal uses. I think, I really think this is an interesting issue, and one that, that I think the councilman has really done an amazing job, it sounds like, to get very close to lots of agreement. We're not necessarily concerned with who's forward or against it, we're concerned with our own planning point of view, but I do think a planning issue, that the scale of the commercial is a planning issue. I don't think it's appropriate to keep developers, to make them feel they're micromanaged when they're trying to do, move ahead with a project. I don't think we should try to defer in a way that would make them two months from now before they think about it, although I guess there's, you know, meat more now, every month now. So I think probably, I want to see this again with any improvements that can be made toward this being a more appropriate use for the neighborhood. And that would include probably the twenty-three hundred, and maybe some other things that we can get nailed down. So I think we should move forward today and disapprove it, and ask that it be re-referred back to us from the council for further look, once it's been more finalized and formalized.
Disapprove or defer?
I want to send it on and disapprove it, and have it come back to us so that we can then evaluate.
How long do we have to wait for it to come back?
Well, that's kind of under the control of the council member. I'm just thinking we can save them, if, if this becomes a supportable, passable bill at the council, then, then, then we don't have to necessarily try to push them forward two months, or one month or anything else. We can have it come back to us in time for it to be on schedule at the council, for us to make an appropriate decision after it gets in its final form. So our recommendation will be what's really going to be voted on by the council.
Okay, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought if we had disapproved it, that there was a time limit on how soon we could bring it back. What about that?
Well, the council can re-refer it back.
Yeah. That's what I'm asking, if the council.
The applicant, if the applicant is constrained by the inability to provide a rezoning to the same thing within one year, but the council can obviously re-refer anything. But your intent is to do that without delay?
Right.
Without delaying the, the public hearing at council?
Right. I think the councilman would be.
And that's possible.
Probably, okay, with the schedule.
And what are the advantages to disapproming it versus deferring it again for two weeks or for four weeks? And allowing them to continue to try to reach consensus among the applicant and the neighborhood?
Well, I think that there's a difference. I don't want to defer it, because I think that, that just leaves it over everyone's head. that, that just leaves it over everyone's head. I want us to, to make a decision, send it on so that it can, can be added upon at the public hearing, which it can't if we defer it. And, 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 you know, we're just assuming that everything will go the way it's expected to go. It may not be what they pass at the council. We may not be able to support it. Needs to come back to us, and I just don't want to defer it again because did that create a lot of problems for people?
Well, Stuart, isn't it true that he could get twenty-seven votes in favor of it and go ahead and get it passed through the council? Is that correct?
Yes.
He can do it even if it's deferred, but I don't think that it would come to this, I think it would be something that would come back to us and that we would probably massage a little bit further without knocking this off the, the current timetable, and I, I really think, well, my just gut feelings I'm getting, that he might be comfortable with that.
So, are you asking, I, I'm confused here.
All right.
You're saying to, to defer and ask it to be re-referred to us?
I'm asking that we disapprove what's before us today.
I mean, disapprove and ask it to be re-referred to us?
Let it go forward at the council and be re-referred to us at the, at the discretion of the council member, should he want us to take a look at another, another version of it. That's all I'm asking. That we can see it again if he wants us to, but to today, I'm not comfortable with approving it as it's written, without the, without further work on.
Okay, so, you're saying move it on, let it pass with twenty-seven votes if, if it passes, or let the council member bring it back for another look?
After public hearing, right.
So, if he brings it back, that's going to put it into the July, or it's going to put it in the last meeting, last council meeting in June, or possibly the first one in July then?
If you have one meeting in July, then what do you do then?
Stuart, I'd like to analyze what we're actually doing. If we defer it, then when's the soonest it could be heard at council? And if we disapprove it and send it to have it come back to us, when's the soonest it could be heard at council? Because I want to see what those dates are.
If it's, if it's deferred, at this meeting, it would go to the, the soonest it could go to council is the August sixth public hearing.
And if it's disapproved and re-refered?
If there's a decision made... I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, if it's a second deferral, what does that do to the timetable as far as relationship to the schedule that they're on at council? Am I asking that question?
You have one, one meeting in July, next July twenty-fifth, so...
Well, the staff's, I guess, trying to answer the timing questions. If we, we've heard the councilman say that he would support twenty-three hundred square feet, assuming it works, the developer can work it out, and maybe only, only that amount of square footage, but, so if we were to make that, put that condition on an approval today, and, you know, I doubt this would happen, but say the developer says, "Well, I can't make that work, it needs to be, I'll, but I'll meet, I can meet you in the middle." With our condition of, of a reduced square footage, can the councilman add square footage? I mean, can it, can it, you know, can, can it be a less restrictive change? I assume they can, but I just wanted to confirm.
The application is for more square, I mean, you have the application before you, which is the forty-nine hundred square feet. Our recommendation is to take it to twenty-three hundred. You obviously could, they couldn't go above what the application is, but you could go between those.
Okay, so the councilman could go back up?
But then he would have a disapproved bill, depending on what the motion is, depending on how we worded the motion, he could have a disapproved bill on his hands then.
Well, that's my question.
Requiring twenty-seven votes.
Yeah. Stuart, that's my question, is I think it's, it's difficult for us at this stage to use that word, you said, I think, micromanage, which way that negotiation goes. I mean, I think for us to say, pick a number and say it should be twenty-three hundred feet is, is a little arbitrary, and it's also not necessarily fitting with reality on the ground. And if the councilman can, can give and take and negotiate with the developer to come up to an understanding, we don't know what that number might be, but it might be less than three thousand. I just feel like for us to say a number and say, "We send it forward, this recommendation, that's what it has to be," is, I mean, we might want to say something, either disapprove or defer, or we'll send it, we'll approve it and say, "Please negotiate something that works with everybody." I mean, you know, we'll trust their, their ability to negotiate something. I just don't feel comfortable, from our perspective, picking a number that a developer or neighborhood has to live with, without their getting to negotiate that.
Okay, just to make sure that I clarify and muddy the waters just slightly more, a deferral recommendation, unless the applicant agrees with the deferral recommendation, will have the effect of sending a recommendation for approval, because of the timing, the timing.
If we...
Can I offer a suggestion? I, I just wanted to suggest that if you, after consultation with, I think, everybody in the room, if, if you approve it with the condition that the second unit be no more than twenty-three hundred square feet, then either the applicant will agree to that and we approve it with twenty-one votes, or if they can agree to that, then the only way I could pass it at the council would be if I could get twenty-seven, which would mean that I would have to obviously have something that the neighborhood is supportive of, that we have reached mutual agreement, such that, such that I'm going to get twenty-seven of my colleagues to go along, and, and I'll just tell you, I think that's unlikely. I think what's going to happen is either we'll agree or disagree on the, on the approval with this condition that we've discussed. But that, that way, I, I, I think everybody's safeguarded, because either it'll be passed as has been suggested at this time, or there's a high threshold for something different.
So, councilman, even if we approve today for three thousand feet, you're still going to go back and negotiate this with the neighbors, right?
Yeah, well, the neighbors have told me that they will agree to twenty-three hundred, and so that's what I've told the developer today that I would support.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval with all conditions specified by the staff, plus the addition of a condition limiting Space B to twenty-three hundred square feet, exterior feet.
Motion, is there a second?
Do we have to vote on the policy first?
You can vote on the policy first.
Great.
You need to vote on 1A first, which is the community plan policy, so...
All right, I move 1A.
Okay. Second?
And on this, we need six affirmative votes to pass it. So, is the motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any show of hands? The motion carries. Now, on 2B, the motion is to restrict that, I mean, 1B is to restrict that to twenty, all staff recommendations, but with a maximum of twenty-three hundred square feet for Space B. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
What was the vote?
We've got one, you descended on...
Well, we have at least three, but...
Okay, show of hands on the second go-around.
Approval?
Approval of the, of 1B, restricting it to twenty-three hundred square feet. You've got three opposed.
We've got one abstaining.
One abstaining, a vote with the four, so the vote carries four to two with one abstaining.
Or three.
Forty-three, one abstaining. We're now ready for item number five.
Commissioners, this is item number five. It's a subdivision amendment for Locust Wood. Request is to remove a note from a recorded plat prohibiting a duplex unit for Lot Two, and Lot Two is...
If one's moving out of the hall, would move out quickly and quietly, we appreciate it.
The request is to remove a note from the existing plat that prohibits a duplex on Lot Two of the last subdivision, and Lot Two is shown here on the aerial surrounded by the RAD boundary. Staff recommends approval of this plat amendment with a condition. The existing zoning is R-ten, and R-ten zoning allows for single-family development or Land use policy is residential low-medium, and residential low-medium is a residential-only policy that, that recommends an overall density of not more than four dwelling units per And here's the subdivision, the two-lot subdivision that was recorded in two thousand and seven. Again, under R-ten zoning, this would, a two-lot subdivision would normally allow for a total of four dwelling units with a duplex on each lot. However, this subdivision, when it was recorded, included a note restricting development on each lot to single-family development, basically be permitting only two single-family dwellings within the subdivision. And this note was added at the time to ensure that the density would remain under the, under the recommended density of the RLM policy, which was required by the subdivision regulations. The applicant now wants to remove that note for Lot Two only, the corner lot on Haywood Lane and, and East Ridge. And this would result in a total development potential of three units among the two lots. And under that original subdivision, the three units would have met the requirements of the subdivision regulations for density. You know, again, the, it was, it was restricted to single-family only on each lot, but allowing for a duplex on the corner lot would still have met that RLM policy recommendation. So, the removal of this note from Lot Two would meet both the current subdivision regulations and those, and the subdivision regulations at that time for the density of the RLM policy. And because of this, the amendment meets the applicable requirements of the subdivision regulations, and staff recommends approval with a condition.
The side is open for public hearing, and applicant be allowed ten minutes, and so we come to the microphone. And you can reserve two minutes for rebuttal if you'd like.
Okay. My name's Ray Mercer, I'm the owner of thirty-nine oh four East Ridge Drive, which is the...
Are you the applicant?
No.
Is the applicant in the audience?
Uh, yeah.
The applicant will speak first.
He's going first? I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Yes, I don't, what do you want me to say? The, I'm trying to just build a duplex in that corners of East Ridge, or, East Ridge and Haywood Lane, and they have a note to say that is for single home, and I've tried to remove that note, so I kind of put a duplex in there. That's basically what...
Did you state your name?
My name is Jamal, Jamal Dervashi.
And your address again, please, sir?
It's one oh eight Custaway Court, Nashville, Tennessee, three seven two one seven.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Do what?
Anything else you'd like to add to your comments?
No, no, this is the first time I ever done it, so I'm so sorry that if I don't know how to present it the right way.
And you'll be allowed two minutes if, after the opposition speaks, if you can think of something, so...
That sounds likely.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Could you state your name and address?
Ray Mercer, thirty-nine oh four East Ridge Drive. And apologize for my ignorance, the staff recommendation says approve with a condition. Could you tell me what that condition is?
Who state the condition for?
This is the condition, the condition was to add several notes to the plat to ensure, to allow this, to allow a duplex on Lot Two to fit in with the surrounding development on East Ridge and Haywood Lane. The first, the first note to be added is parking shall not be located within the front setback along the two street frontages. Also, the, the second bullet point, the second aspect of this would require each, each half of the duplex or each unit to face a separate street frontage, so that both street frontages would have a front door facing that street. And the last unit was basically putting in the, putting on the plat or putting on, in the amendment, the zoning code requirement that for the distance of a driveway away from a street intersection, and also saying that if it didn't meet the requirements of the zoning code, it would have to be reviewed by the metro traffic engineer, just because it is at the intersection of, of, of two main, two, 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 two main streets.
Well, as Councilman Potts had previously stated, the residents there, of course, you know, were proposed to oppose because it doesn't fit in with the current residents in the area. But another main concern that I have is the traffic and the issue there. Haywood Lane is a very busy street, it's less than a mile off the intersection of I-24 and Haywood Lane. This particular street, it's at the bottom of a hill on both sides, there's a hill coming from the west and a hill coming from the, from the east, and there's traffic at certain times of the day that actually backs up there on East Ridge Drive. There has been several accidents at that intersection, and my fear is that by building on that corner lot there, that the obstruction that you would have from whatever place there is going to create a, a safety hazard, not just for the residents, but for anyone traveling on East Ridge or on Haywood Lane. So, you know, that is the issue that I, that I would bring to you today, is the traffic issue and the safety issue that it would create, not just the issue of not fitting in with the residents, homeowners that are currently there and have been there for, since the late nineteen fifties. And of course, this area, I've, I've owned a house there for over thir, about thirty-five years, and of course, it just, just like any other area in Nashville, keeps getting busier and busier.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If you'd like to, your councilman?
I would just like to add a couple things to what I said earlier. These are ranch-style homes, and like you said, this is a busy intersection, but we're just trying to preserve the character of the neighborhood, is what I heard from the, the district, you know, the residents in the area. And of course, I live on that street as well, I live at thirty-nine fourteen East Ridge Drive, so I'm very familiar with the intersection, how dangerous it is turning right or left. So, I agree with the constituent, and I agree with a lot of people that told me that about, we had a same situation about two years ago on Packard and Fairlane, same situation, the builder, developer wanted to build three, two homes on a lot, but he wanted to do duplexes at first. So, he brought that proposal to the last council member, and the neighborhood was adamantly opposed to that situation, which is, it's about a mile from Haywood Lane, Packard intersects with East Ridge Drive and Packard, so it's not very far away, it's kind of the same situation. So, they came to a compromise of building two single-family homes on two lots, which the neighborhood was for. I think that this would probably be a better situation, a single-family home at that location, so it preserves the character and blends in with the area. Understand that it would bring, you know, having a separate driveway for the one facing East Ridge and Haywood, but these are all ranch-style homes, kind of long, if you're familiar with ranch-style home, it's, duplex is very different than a ranch-style home. So, that's all I have to say, just want to let you know the situation.
Thank you. If you would, bring up the plat, it looked like there were some restrictions or easements on there that... Can you build one facing Haywood and the drive come off of East Ridge, and then one facing East Ridge with a drive coming off of East Ridge?
Most likely, most likely, based on the requirements of the zoning code and the distance from the street intersection, and you're right, the location of, of a stream on this site, it would, there would only be one driveway permitted at the very southern edge of the property on East Ridge. edge of the property on East Ridge.
Do you like, you've got two minutes for rebuttal, if you want to say anything.
I don't have anything to add. I just, like I said, I just want to do like investment, just to put a duplex, and that's basically what I was intended to do.
Good question.
Let's close the public hearing. Is the motion to close the public hearing?
I'm in.
Motion second, close the public hearing, on the favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. Now you can ask a question.
Do you, well, not sure how relevant this is exactly, but do you have a design in mind of what you were thinking of building there?
I have a contractor, really. I mean, he has several kind of designs, but I haven't did anything yet until we get the whole thing approved, you know?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
What are the setback requirements if he was to build a house facing Haywood Lane? What would be the setback requirements? Because I'm familiar with this area, and I do know that traffic is a bear there, and that's a concern I have right off.
He would have a pretty significant setback along Haywood Lane because of, one, it's an arterial road, so it starts off with a 40-foot setback, and then it has to meet the, I guess it would be the, it would have to also mix in with the, within the contextual setback of the adjacent house to the east, which already has a deep setback. So I don't know if I have the exact number, but it would be, I mean, I think, from what I remember, it was about a 60-foot setback from Haywood Lane. I mean, it was a pretty substantial, pretty substantial one from that street. Do you have any comments?
So the zoning for this is duplexes. R, right?
R-10.
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 So that's duplexes. I mean, and single-family, but not, not limited to single-family. And the reason the, the note was put on the, on it was because of what? A technical reason that I didn't quite get?
When it was approved in 2007, it was added so that it would meet the density of the RLM policy. And for some reason, it was added for both lots, but it didn't, it could have met RLM policy without it being, with it just being added to Lot, to the interior lot and not the corner lot.
I, you know, I'm, I'm trying to think of it in terms of what I'm used to, and obviously my part of town has a lot of RS and a lot of R, and the zoning usually controls, unless there's something I'm missing here. So I, I'm not really sure. I don't understand why it was put on it.
Back, back in 2007, the subdivision regulations had requirements for lot comparability. And there was a formula that...
Oh, the formula. I remember that.
There's a formula that's, that explained how the lot, both the lot size and the lot frontage width had to be consistent with surrounding lots on the same street frontages. And so this was put through that formula, and both lots failed that lot comparability requirement. But the commission approved this, and they were allowed, the commission was allowed to approve this by granting a waiver, saying that the subdivision would meet the, meet the requirements of the, of the community plan. And that's based on the RLM policy and the density of four dwelling units per acre. So the commission approved this, even though it didn't meet lot comparability, it met the density of the, of the policy, and that was the reason the commission had, gave to approve it.
With the note?
I'm sorry?
With the note.
With the note, right. And that, and that note was needed, that note was added because two duplexes would have been over the RLM policy. And two units was well under, and three units on these two lots would have, would have been under the four dwelling units per acre maximum of the RLM policy.
I think I understand. So the, the, the note was applied, perhaps for political reasons, to both lots, even though the two, the lot in question here would have met the policy even if the note had not been applied. Is that correct?
Right. If it had, right. If the, if the single-family restriction had just been added to one lot, the entire subdivision would have, would have met the RLM policy.
But this lot also did not meet the formula of the lot comparability, so...
That's right, at the time.
So from a planning perspect, I guess the question is, was this for political planning reasons? And I wanted to be sure that it wasn't just an arbitrary reason that it was applied here. And I suppose even though the polit, even though it would have met the policy with the duplex allowed on this lot, it still didn't meet the, the, the formula for being consistent with the neighborhood. So, so I don't know how I'm going to...
And just to clarify also, it does meet the current subdivision regulations?
If this was a case of being asked to change this to R instead of an RS, I would be very suspect on this. I think the real challenge in this case is, how can you make a duplex look like a single-family home? And that's, that's really going to be, the crux of the whole thing. And you saying, just to clarify, on the southern boundary is the only place they can put a driveway that will have to service both units. Is that correct?
That, that's what it, that's, that's what it appears to be, yes.
Well, there's an existing driveway on the southern lot.
There isn't, yeah, that's...
Right. So they would put, they would put a second driveway...
Does it service another house, too?
No. No. You can see, you can see the existing drive on this. So what you would do would be, what I think Greg's talking about is putting a second driveway off of East Ridge right there. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. That's what I was thinking. Yeah.
Where is the other driveway?
Well, it shows there, right there.
For the existing house.
For the existing house on the southern lot. But this is the lot that we're talking about with this application.
Right. So you'd have one driveway that would serve the, both units of the duplex?
Well, you know, again, I understand it. I wouldn't be in love with it, but I think I could say that I'd be in favor of it.
Councilman?
So are there any other duplexes in this neighborhood area now?
There are, there are a handful of other duplexes in this neighborhood.
There are. Okay. So given the, the location of the buffers and the setbacks that you're talking about, is it possible to do an L-shaped structure that has two separate facing portions to it?
We did take a look at that, and based on the square footage of the, of the, of what we understand the buildable area to be, it would be possible to do, to do a duplex with both units facing opposite street frontages.
Okay. I have a question for the director here. Sometimes, I mean, this is not a zoning, we're removing a note, so sometimes we, we have done like administrative kinds of things where we have to find a reason why we wouldn't allow something to happen. Is this one of those situations or not?
No, I think, I think Greg has talked properly about that. I mean, when this was originally subdivis, subdivided, three units would have been allowed on there by policy. So what they're doing is simply trying to comply with the policy. They, they over-restricted it at that point to allow only a maximum of two units, two single-family units. The three units would have been proper, this, this would have been proper at the original time we did it, to have done it only on one lot, so.
The lot was changed.
The problem, the problem was that the lot comparability did not, you could not subdivide this lot, the original lot, the original single lot could not be subdivided at all because of lot comparability. Okay? But it could have been built as a duplex. You could have had one duplex on this. So what, what you said was, okay, it doesn't meet the comparability, but we would prefer two single-family houses, therefore, we're going to allow the subdivision, we're going to allow two single-family houses. Now, the, the actual comparability to the policy would have allowed up to three. But basically, you kind of said, okay, you could do two units now. I'd rather have two separated units than one duplex. We'll let the subdivision go through, we'll put the restriction on both lots, and you could have two units. That's kind of the simplest way I could put it. And technically, they could have asked for three.
Are there any other lots like, like this in this general area?
Again, there are a handful of other duplexes in this...
I mean, are there any other lots that have the kinds of challenges that this one Or is this just a kind of a oddity?
Well, I mean, all of the lots along Haywood would have, well, all of the lots along Haywood would have a 40-foot setback requirement at least. And, you know, a lot of the houses along that street also have deep setbacks. So they're, based on the, you know, contextual setback requirements of the zoning code, there would be a deep setback required along Haywood Lane for many lots. As for the, you know, the stream buffer, I can't speak to that on, on, on surrounding lots, but, you know, you know, that, that, it's, it's not unusual for a lot to have a significant stream buffer on it.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't, I certainly understand what the councilman's saying and what the, the neighbor has to say here, but from a planning perspective, this is allowed in the, the zoning that's there, and it meets the subdivision requirements, and it'd be hard for me to, to vote against it.
What month in 2007 was this approved?
The planning commission approved it, I'm sorry, at the December 14th, 2006 meeting.
2006, okay. I think there's probably three of us that would have been sitting on that, on that commission at that time. My understanding was that you had one lot, you could build a duplex, but we said, rather than the duplex, you'd rather have two single-family houses. And we approved that based on having two single-family, because we didn't want a duplex. But now, since zoned that way, we're going to say now, seven years later, have a duplex, which seemed like, once we put that note on there, that was the purpose of saying, go build a duplex, or we'll divide it into two lots, and you'd have two single-family houses.
Has the policy changed since then?
I think, I don't think the policy today, you know, that it, whatever we did in 2006, I know you can, we can do whatever we need to, and it'll be legal. But I, I think that the ones that voted, I don't know how I voted, or Stuart or Field, but I think we were the three that was on there in 2006. But, but if we, if we allowed the lot division to allow for two single-family homes instead of a duplex, come back now and say, okay, you got your single family, we're still going to give you a duplex, I'm not sure I could support that.
So could I ask, so in 2007, 2006, whenever, this lot, Lot 2 of the subdivision, met the policy in terms of density, would have met the zoning as a duplex, but did not meet the subdivision regs because of the lot comparability. We have since changed the subdivision regs. So today, it meets the subdivision regs, it meets the policy, and it, it's consistent with the zoning.
That's right.
Okay.
Motion.
Well, the other thing, though, we took, probably four of us, depending on what town in 2006, I don't know.
September.
We took a, a valid legal position that, that was not incorrect.
Wasn't.
Prohibited by law. And that's sort of your point, isn't it? I may be agreeing with you.
Hunter's saying that since the...
Well, we created a lot.
But the legal, the conditions have changed legally, the subdivision regs have changed. Is what I thought I just heard. Is that right?
That's right. So the comparability requirements are no longer in the subrings.
That's right. And I guess...
So now it is, it is, it would be appropriate to legality of the site.
If we go back and essentially second-guess valid decisions we made because of later changes in regulations, is that what we want to do? I don't know.
I think the note, the...
If they're now valid changes, I...
You know, Stuart, I think the answer to that is that you, you record a subdivision, and maybe the restrictions at that time were that the, 10 years ago, you could build a house within three foot for the property line. Now, that's five. So since that's changed, I don't think that you would go back and say, well, that, that was allowed then, but it's not now. That's so, you know, it depends on whether you use today's regulations or the ones then. But we created a lot that today, with the change of the regulations, will allow duplex. But the purpose of the vote in 2006 in subdividing that and putting a note on there was to have two single-family homes. Now, I'm for the density, and I, and the traffic, adding one more family there, to me, is not going to cause another wreck, it's not going to cause any traffic, any more stormwater. I'm just saying technically that when we decided that day to allow them to divide it in two, so they, instead of having a duplex, they could separate those and have two single-family, that we kind of made ourselves locked in to support the note still on there.
Could we ask our council to comment on that, please?
Thank you. On this one, there are two points that I just wanted to chime in on. There is a provision in your rules about disapproval for plats, and, and this would be a change to a plat, so I think it would fit under that category. And it says, "Disapproval." "The grounds for disapproval of any plat shall be stated in the record of the commission and recorded in the minutes." So I think it was Councilman Claiborne that may have asked a question with regard to what needs to be in the motion, if there is a motion for disapproval. So you certainly do need to include in there any of your disapproval grounds, so that it's clear in the record. The other thing is that when you, you have a new application before you today under separate regulations that may or may not have been in effect at the time it was originally approved. At that time, you had regulations that you were applying to that application. And at that time, there was a formula that had to be utilized in order to determine whether or not that granting of that application would be appropriate. And that's what the board did as a body. I wasn't here in 2007, but I'm going to assume that that's what the board did as, as a body in trying to apply that standard. That being said, you have a new application as of 2013, and you have to evaluate that application based on what the current law is at this time, understanding that that law may have changed since the last application. But I think you have to apply the rules that are in play now to this application and make your determination going forward.
Is that note on the plat, is that kind of along the same lines as deed restriction?
Um, I think it would be a little different than a deed, deed restriction. I think a deed restriction would have more of a private party enforcement mechanism than, than a government action. But I think, so I, so I think it's different.
Okay.
I think, I think, I think this, what you put on as a condition is an enforceable condition by the government. Nonetheless, you have a new application with new rules, and I think you have to apply those.
Hunter?
I have one question. So the rest of this neighborhood, by right today, can build duplexes?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve the application, as recommended by staff.
Got a motion second to approve the staff recommendations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I was going to ask a quick question, but...
I'm sorry.
That's fine. But does the note stay on the other lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Philip, you had a meeting with two of your cohorts on the election of officers. Would you like to make a report on that?
Yes, I am reporting, reporting for Greg Kinsu, who is not here today. He asked, as chairman, to pass along to the commission the nominees for chairman and vice chairman for this next year. And unanimous choice was Stuart Clifton for vice chair and Jim McLean for chair. In addition to that, if anybody would like to nominate someone here today, you're welcome to do that.
New nominations for the area commissioners? New nominations from the area commissioners?
Do we have a social chairman?
That is a collateral duty for a vice chair.
Any other nominations?
Can I move that we accept the slate as presented by the nominating committee?
You handle the vote.
All right, I'll, I'll take the vote on this. All those in favor of approving the nominations from the nominating committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you.
Still need to elect one person, one additional person to go on the executive committee? Yeah, you're not, this, there's a, your rules call for a three-member executive committee, includes the chairman, the vice chairman and one additional member chosen by the commission at the annual meeting, which you're at today.
The committee did honestly not consider somebody for that, so who is the current?
Andre is the-
Well, I'll nominate Andre again for-
Got a motion second for Andre. Any other nominees? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Congratulations.
You have two more, you have Parks rep and Historical.
You got anything on Historical?
No, we had to reps, we had to elect those.
We have to elect the roles.
Got a what?
You had to prove it.
Those are mayoral appointments.
Are you appoint those? No, I think-
Mine was a mayoral appointment.
Oh, that's right, yours is a mayoral appointment, that's right.
Well, the Parks is appointed Phil to that and the Historic is to the mayor's office. Those are the only two we have to do.
Okay, good.
Just to the record, I would appreciate being able to serve another year.
Hunter?
No report.
No report. Phil, anything from Parks?
We had a dedication of a new park at the corner of Leland and Gale this morning and it was wonderful. These, it's five acres that actually belonged to T-Dot. They did not use for an interchange on 440, so they beautified it and turned it over to the city. And it was fabulous, real nice ceremony. Our next meeting will be the first Tuesday in June, which I think is the fourth, yes, at noon and we'll have to tell you where. It's not going to be at the regular location, it'll be at another location this time.
That park is the beginning, just to expand, that's the beginning of an extensive trail that's going to go along 440, including some land the city purchased for the flood area right there at 440 and 65, but basically running all along 440. So it's a really significant part of that, that process.
And Phil, we received from Craig, yesterday Craig Owensby, a email that outlines a lot of events going on, singing, dancing.
Oh, yeah, summer is full. And there's even this, this Saturday night, there is a moonlight walk across the Cumberland on the Cumberland River Bridge. And this will be a Greenway, kind of a rally for new memberships in the Greenways. So it starts at like 6:30 and there's going to be a fire pit and I guess it'll have smores and all that kind of stuff. So that's Saturday evening at 6:30.
Actually, that was an event that was started by Hip Donaldson.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. You can fill in the details.
That's the 5,000-plus member social network organization that's in the Donaldson community and they reached out to the Parks and asked if it would be proper to make that into a Greenway event that could be a membership related event.
Fantastic, thank you. Now, by the way, we did have a very good event, Friends of Two Rivers. You want to tell them about that last Saturday, Sunday?
Yeah, we had the annual open house, membership drive, annual meeting type event. Was well attended considering that we were competing with the opening of the convention center and the graduation of McGavick High School, but we did really well. And Mr. Chair, there will be four of those park events at the mansion this summer, one in June, one in July, one in August, one in September, music at the mansion. And that's on the back lawn, so you can bring your blanket, lawn chairs and your cooler and enjoy some great music. We'll have rock and roll, big band, blues and contemporary Christian in September.
Marky's grave in the blues.
Yes, he is.
You've got those starting, I think around 7:30. There's some concerts in Central Park, in Centennial Park, not in Centennial Park, around two o'clock to five, there's a big band later on, there's just Dragon Park.
Dance this summer, right?
Oh, yeah. Go to the website and you can pick out all these.
You might want to access that email because there's a lot of things to do.
And a lot of them are free, I, first they all free, so that's the wonderful thing. Ms. Chee, I'm sure will be writing these up every day, there'll be a continuing series from her.
Anything you want to add from the council?
I just wanted to mention that based on the recommendation of the civil service commission, that the step increases have been added back into the budget and I wanted to ask Rick what impact that you think that'll have on your budget.
We're in the process right now of trying to evaluate that. It only affects, I would say, about 20 to 25% of our employees and we're trying to actually estimate what that is right now, because it has to be done within the constraints of whatever amount of money we have.
Right. And it's, it's a step for this year. And then the one and a half percent raise will kick in on January the first.
Right, the majority of our employees are open range employees, not civil service.
Some of the departments are impacted greater than others are because of, they have more of the open range positions and some folks are happy about putting that back in and some are not, but I think it's a good thing, so.
I think it's a good thing, which we just get some money for the open range positions as well.
Rick, your report?
A couple of things.
So I guess we still have your report.
We have two new employees, our two designers who will start in just a couple of weeks. Andrew Collins will be planner two, Brenda Diaz will be planner one. We are working on the Murfreesboro Road UDO that will be coming to the planning commission in July, July 25th. We've had several meetings out there with the council members and residents and property owners out there. In light of the Oklahoma tragedy, I just wanted to point out, we did finish up a storm shelter registry that we have provided to OEM. It's a completely computerized registry of all the storm shelters in Davidson County, so they're, they have the capacity now to route people and inform people where those storm shelters are. In terms of Nashville Next, we have the Booker Planner video is up on our page so that people can see the key issues there. And lastly, we have several presentations over the next two weeks. We've had a very busy this, this two weeks in terms of presentations. We don't have quite as many over the next one, but we do get to talk to ULI and Nashville's immigrant and refugee task forces as well, as well as others. One last thing, because I haven't mentioned it, had an opportunity to mention it here. One of the studies that we're in the process of finalizing right now with Nashville Next is a, a study of Jefferson Street, an economic analysis. And what we're doing is actually we're using resources from Tennessee State University and Vanderbilt University. And what they're going to do is to do a survey of historically black economic corridors around the country and try to determine if there are any particularly unique tools that we need to consider in terms of revitalization of Jefferson Street. So we've done an awful lot of study of that, but I don't think we've really looked to see what are the best practices in similar situations around the country. And this will also include a market study that will then lead us in terms of the policies that will inform the plan as we go forward. But I think this will be a particularly, we're really excited about this and kind of working with jump and some other groups.
Anyone else? Stand adjourned.